In the meeting order, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which it stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Shirley, have you had a chance to take a roll?
I have taken roll. Everybody is present. You have a form.
Move on to the consent agenda board. You'll see the consent agenda. Do you have any questions or items of discussion on the consent agenda this evening? See no questions or items of discussion? Can we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The consent agenda passes. We'll move on to mayor's remarks. The only items I have for the mayor's remarks this evening is the reappointment of Doyle Riley and Chuck Davis to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We simple motion to approve my reappointment of these two individuals. I've met with both Chuck in person and staff received communication from Doyle since he's out of the country. Both have a desire to continue and serve.
I make a motion to accept the reappointment of Doyle Riley and Chuck Davis to Plan and Zoning Commission.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I appreciate your support there, board. We'll move on to the administrative report.
Mr. Mayor, we had a Tom Decker brought to our attention that there was additional concrete spalling that they discovered when they were making repairs on the Raymond Hall Bridge, and they recommended installing eight additional deck drains to help water make its way off the bridge to prevent further damage. We agreed that his approach was reasonable, and it, the work's gonna, the change order will cost $7,360, which is just under my authority to approve that, and I have approved it because they were on the job working. And so I'm simply bringing to your attention that this expenditure was made in addition to our contract, which was approximately $30,000. And so we believe these repairs will extend the life of the bridge for many years to come.
So you're looking for a motion?
I don't think there's one. I just wanted, for the record, to share that information with you all.
Yeah, it was, it was under the administrator's purchasing authority, so he moved forward. The repairs have been done. Appreciate the update there, Jim, and thanks for getting that done while they're in town already. Does the board have any questions regarding that report? We'll move on to public requests and petitions. I believe we have two items to discuss this evening. We'll start with the Bill Shoal request first, please.
Mayor Bill Shoal is in our audience, and he's coming to the podium right now.
I would never miss the Board of Aldermen. I would, once again, make my annual request for a fireworks display permit this year. We're going to do it on July the 2nd, which would be a Saturday evening. I have to pick up my product on the day it's actually shot off, and between church in the morning and family, we just decided we wouldn't compete with the city this year. So with the board's permission, we'd like to do it on July the 2nd.
Thank you, because I enjoy your show too. Thank you.
Now, can I, once again, invite all of the members to come to my backyard on July the 2nd, which I repeatedly have offered, but you keep saying, "Well, there's something up north here."
And we also pointed out to you that you could come see our show that evening. And we have a stage we'd like to put you on and draw people's attention to what you do for us and give our plug for our Christmas fireworks. Would you, would you like to join us on July the 3rd?
I can give you a very strong maybe. I'm waiting for my wife's decision on that.
That's all right. Perfect.
Well, Mr. Shoal, I, for one, am extremely excited that your show's gonna be on the 2nd. Our show's gonna be on the 3rd. It'll be two wonderful evenings of shows for our community. Does the board have any questions from staff or Mr. Shoal on his request?
What time will yours start?
We will start at 9:30, and we're on about 30 to 45 minutes.
Perfect. Thank you.
We do would like a motion from the board to authorize.
Make motion to approve Bill Shoal's request for fireworks permit on July 2nd.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution passes. Congratulations, Mr. Shoal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very, very much, and hopefully we'll see you on July 2nd and also over Christmas.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item under discussion is David and Elizabeth Wollmuth of Fat Boys Bar and Grill.
Yes, thank you so much for having us back. We are here to follow up on our proposed request from the last meeting for our four Saturday events going through the summer and the early fall. So when we requested in the last meeting, we didn't have too many confirmed details, but we do have a lot of confirmed details for you today. So I do have a visual if I can be allowed to share my screen, if that's okay.
Proceed.
Okay, I am bringing that up now. Let me know when you can see that.
There we go.
Perfect. Okay, so as you can see, we have actually chosen a name for these events. We didn't have a name chosen on the last meeting, so we will be calling these Block Party Saturdays 2022. We are hoping that this can be an annual event. Once it gets approved this year, we'd love to do this every year going forward and continue to call it Block Party Saturdays. So moving on here, we do also have our dates confirmed. So we didn't have dates for you last time. We now do. Let me get rid of this. So our first date is June 25th. July 20, second one is July 23rd, and then August 27th and September 24th. These are the confirmed dates. We also have B-Shop Professional and Novice Cornhole Tournaments that are scheduled for those dates and confirmed. As I stated in the last meeting, Aaron Doyle is going to be heading up these tournaments for us. He's ran tournaments in the past at Stables Bar and Grill and has committed his time for these four dates in the street in front of Fat Boys to run these tournaments. I think I mentioned in the last meeting as well, there will be 40-plus teams on each of these dates, so that brings in at least 80, 80 players. And then, of course, the community will also be invited to these events to enjoy or even join in on the novice cornhole tournaments. I know a lot of people will also show up to just watch the professional cornhole tournaments. That's pretty interesting and exciting to watch. I enjoy watching myself. So I think that these will be, these events will be very well received from the community. We will also be holding an after-party at Fat Boys with live music every Saturday for each of these events. So as you can see, we have bands scheduled to play inside the bar after each of these events. Penny Lawrence Band for the June 25th date, Casey Ruckus Band for the July 23rd date, and then The Highway for August 27th, and then Damian Gunn Band for September 24th. Another very exciting proponent of these events is that we will be raising funds for four different local Carney organizations. So as you can see, Fulment House will be sponsored in the June date, Carney Food Pantry for July, Northland Therapeutic Writing Center for August, and then the Carney Enrichment Council in September. The other exciting thing about bringing in these charities is that Fat Boys, Gino's, and also Decreamery, who's now kind of on board to help us with these events. And also, I think Mayor Pogue, I think that you received an email from Lisa Hoffman at Decreamery sort of stating her willingness to be in these events with us. And they'll also be serving barbecue. But all three of us, Gino's, Fat Boys, and Decreamery are going to donate 5% of our net profit for each of these days that we have these events. We will also be allowing these, and I'll go ahead and move to the next slide here, but we'll also be allowing each of these four organizations to be a part of these events. So they'll have the ability to set up a booth and to hand out giveaways, informational brochures, flyers, talk about any upcoming events that they'll be having. Also, they will have donation buckets out there on their tables so that patrons that are actually at the events can actually donate cash donations to them as well. And of course, 100% of the collected funds in these buckets will go directly to those charities. So moving on, I did want to address a couple of questions that were brought up in the last meeting. I know there was some questions asked about parking and security for these particular events. Also, wanted to add a couple of other items to kind of just make sure that you know how we're going to execute these events and feel comfortable with us executing these events. So parking and security were the two that were brought up in the last meeting, so I'll start with parking. We do plan to utilize all of Washington Street on the portion of the street that's not closed. So if you'll recall, we're only asking to close the street from the intersection of Grove and Washington to the end of Gino's parking lot. So that leaves us the rest of Washington Street all the way down to the feed store for parking. We also have the parking lot directly across from Fat Boys, the back alley behind Fat Boys. There are parking spaces in Old Church Plaza in front of the vacant UPS building. And of course, as we discussed in the last meeting as well, the city-owned gravel lot near Fox and Fire Barbecue, we'd love to be able to utilize that as well. So we feel that that is more than enough parking to accommodate these events. Next item here is security. We, Fat Boys Management, so myself and David, will notify and also stay in close communication with the Carney Police Department on these event days. So we want to make sure that they're aware of these happening in case any incidents or issues. We also plan to employ a bouncer, security guard, whatever you'd like to call it, to be present for the entirety of each of the events. And they will act as our security for the events, making sure that patrons don't, don't go outside of the barricades. They're not taking their drinks outside of the barricades, things like that. We also do have a pretty straightforward emergency response plan. So for minor injuries, we do have a first aid kit on hand for anyone that has, you know, a cut, bruise, scrape, things like that. But of course, in the event of an emergency or a serious injury of a patron, the Carney Fire Department EMTs will be contacted. As you all know, they're less than a mile from the event location, so they should be able to respond pretty quickly to anything that may happen. Next on the list is our liquor license. We mentioned in the last meeting that we were in the process of applying for a temporary catering permit. So we did get temporary approval, or I guess the first approval, from the Missouri Division of Alcohol and Tobacco Control. The only thing that they need to go ahead and give us the final approval is they do need four separate letters from the City of Carney, basically just approving the events and letting them know that we do have the approval to use the space. So once they receive that, they will go ahead and provide those temporary catering licenses for those four dates, and we can provide those copies to the city, city once we receive them. Last but not least, our general and liquor liability insurance. We talked with Jim Eldridge earlier last week, and he had mentioned that the city would like us to try and obtain insurance for these particular events. So we have applied for and are in the process of obtaining a, what's called a special event, GL and liquor liability from GMP, GMPeters Insurance Company. Our insurance person, Eric, is, is awesome to work with, and he's usually great about turning these things around pretty quickly. So we're hoping to have an answer here in the next couple of days about the cost and things like that. Depending on the cost associated with these insurance policies, we may need to request financial assistance from the city to obtain these policies. Obviously, if it's in the thousands of dollars, it doesn't make sense for us to do these events. We do need to make sure that we're breaking even and making some money on these events. So depending on the cost, we may need to come back and request that financial assistance from the city. That being said, I want to pause and ask if there are any questions or if I can clarify anything that I went over.
Are there any questions from the board? From the the business owner?
I think my big concern was the last statement about the city providing financial assistance for insurance policies. That, to me, is something that's gonna leave us wide open for any other events that, that may need insurance, and, and so I don't know that I'm in agreement with that, so.
Alderman Lehman, I have been in touch with Joe Lopper, who very strongly recommends not only liquor liability and general liability, but that we should probably have an indemnity agreement with, with them. It is our public street. Anything that happens in our street is, is, is a liability exposure directly to the city. We also, Joe had pointed out, he had strong concerns about the type of barriers we're going to be used, because if a car were to drive through there accidentally or not, we, he warned us that because we consciously did this, it was a knowing thing that we had done, that we could possibly jeopardize our, our what do they call that? Our
Sovereign immunity rights?
Sovereign immunity, our sovereign immunity protections, which means that the, you know, the 3 million, 3.1 million limit would, would be off the table, and they can sue away. He warned us about this, and I strongly recommend that we, I know you guys have something scheduled for just, there quickly, but I don't think you gave us enough time to react to this. And I, I, I think an agreement needs to be drafted and passed muster through our, you know, by our attorneys, and they, they'll need, they'll appreciate having this information. What they'll really want, though, is a map that kind of shows what it is we're closing on. And how are we communicating that to all, all other folks? I mean, that needs to be communicated in advance. We need to have a street closed sign down here. It's not a simple thing, just to, to party out in the street without, without having safety barriers up. We have essentially, what do you call them, bike racks? What do you call our barriers? They're just, they're just temporary. There's something that a human, that a couple of guys can, can, can hang out in the street, and it demarks a location. But when it gets dark at night and people are, are driving at night, especially the little old ladies that drive over the hill to Eastwood Apartments, who may have moved here and not know any other way to their, their property is down Washington Street, that, that, you know, I really think a substantial barrier, like a Jersey barrier, would be the safest thing or safer to prevent traffic from driving, the through traffic from driving through. I, I concern myself over that, because this is going to be a frequent event, four, four times out of one year. This is not an event that we all know about. It is not the 11 o'clock Jesse James Parade. It is not the 1 o'clock in the hour, or 2 o'clock in the afternoon homecoming parade that happens every year. This is, this is a private event that's going to run 10 hours, 12 hours?
Yeah, 10, 10, 12 hours.
And I, I, I've never seen it done. I'd like to see it done somewhere, you know, but for a pri, for a strictly a private event, it, it concerns me that we are moving this fast on it without even talking about the insurance yet. So, you know, that, that is a problem, I see.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and, and those are definitely legitimate concerns, and I'm glad that they're brought up, and we definitely want to work through any issues or concerns that you all have about these events. Kind of from our perspective, we see these, these events as a way to also bring revenue into the city. We did this for the Legends Festival. The street was shut down, and it was a very successful event by the Carney Enrichment Council. I know those same barriers that, that the police officers have were used for that, and, you know, we didn't see an issue with traffic. So I think that maybe that can be mitigated. Maybe we can do some caution tape, some colored tape, things like that, to kind of draw attention to it. Maybe some temporary lighting out in the street, whatever we need to do. But it's just something that I think would really bring a lot of outside revenue into the city, plus it will benefit some of our local charitable organizations, so.
I would have to agree with Alderman Lehman. I, I'm not interested in helping pay for insurance. If that's something that you guys can't handle, then I think, then we have to find another, another option, because once we start paying for your insurance, we're gonna pay for everybody's insurance, or on some level. I like your plan, and I wish that we, I, I wish we could get this done. I hope we can maybe get this done by the end of the month. But I share Jim's concerns. I think there are things that we don't want to rush. I would like to see an off-duty police officer, not, not just somebody that you've, you've hired that works the bar, but some, an off-duty police officer who carries a little more weight as, as a security. Solid barriers, I think, is important. And I would like to see, if we, if we do move forward with this, I would like to see us not necessarily lock ourselves into four. If something happens and we don't feel it's in a good position for the city, I'd like for us to be able to say, you know, "We tried and it didn't work, and let's move on." I know that's not, not ideal for you guys. But I'm concerned if we, if we have, if we have something happen, we have a big fight in the street, or we have an accident in the street, do we want to do it the next month? And I don't, I think the answer to that is, first, from a city perspective, we wouldn't want to do that again.
Sure.
So those are my concerns. Again, I, I like your, I like the idea of it. I like bringing people into town. I like the idea of these kind of grassroots parties, for a lack of a better word. I like all of that. I just, I just don't want to open the city up for a lot of liability.
I think I can have the Lopper Group draft an agreement and have, and have that pending, but we really kind of need to have word, you know, what is, what is the cost of insurance for that? You did go to the right people when you went to GMPeters.
Oh, yes.
So, so, so those people know what they're doing.
Yes, for sure.
And so, so that, that was, you're on the right path. And I will try to, you know, I can, I can get an agreement drafted for the June 20th meeting, but that's only four days in advance, five days in advance. The thing, and I, I, I I don't know how to give you assurances that, 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 that would be something that our attorneys are going to recommend.
Well, and I will say, these are, these dates have not been, you know, obviously communicated to the public. So I mean, if we need to scrap the June date and add an October date, or, you know, we're, we're flexible with that, for sure.
Well, sorry, Mayor.
Sorry. I would be interested to hear Alderman, and Alderman Spencer's thoughts, and depending on those thoughts, this, this may be something I'd recommend we table until the, the requister could have the opportunity to figure out insurance cost and, and to see if the additional requests of the board to even consider facilitating a request like this financially makes sense for the applicant. But, I, I welcome any of their thoughts from the other two board members.
Well, my, my thought is, I agree. I don't, I, I love this idea. I really do. I think it's gonna be good. We've seen street festivals here really work. But we also have the liability of city, because once we get sued once, and that means anybody else that wants to do this, it, it can't happen either. And frankly, I'd like to see this kind of expand here. So, yeah, I'd like to get the insurance together. I'd like to see this agreement that you're drawing up, because I'd like to see what that agreement says on that. It, it's definitely not something I want to can. It's something I'd like to work out and make work. I don't know that we can do it by the 25th, but I sure would like to see this get done.
No pressure.
So I, I'm, I'm kind of, yeah, I guess like the mayor, I kind of table till we know what our insurance costs are and if we can get that done, and how to protect the, the city. Now, if you notice, a lot of times when we had the, like, Oktoberfest and stuff, we had police cars, we had the barriers, but we also had police cars sideways. So that kind of, that gave that solid barrier. So I don't know if there's something we can, if you get off-duty police officers to, to help, we can get, you know, like, their cars or something. I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely. And I agree with you guys on the insurance aspect, because then everybody's gonna have their hand out. I totally agree with that. We're not here for a freebie. We just were talking about
Sure.
With the barricades, I think it kind of worked together to get those from you guys, the same ones we used at the Legends. I mean, we were, you made a point as far as it getting dark. Yeah, let's put some caution tape on them, but the previous Legends Festival, there wasn't a caution tape. They sat there all night till dark.
Well, and I know that there, there are, you know, blinking lights that we can maybe attach to those, those barriers to kind of draw more attention to them in the, in the night as well, so that might be an option.
That's a good idea. That's, that's my thoughts, Jerry.
I, I agree with all of your comments. I think this is a great idea. I really think this can roll and move forward. Cornhole, pickleball, several of these sports are, they're it right now. And so for us to get in on this would be fabulous. I do agree, we can't do the insurance thing with that, that one. So I think that probably what's gonna end up happening is the June one, it's just so close. That one may not happen. May have to tag it on to the back end. But I think if you have all your ducks in a row, and Jim said that this is a quality insurance company that you have approached.
Oh, yeah, GMPeters, yeah.
I think you've got some good things going for you, and I think this can work. It just can't work in quite the time that we had hoped it would work.
Sure.
So it appears our, our general feedback from the board is something we still want, would like to see come to our community. We just want to make sure that the, we mitigate the risk to the city and, and quite frankly, our, you, the applicant and other businesses involved. It's something that we only want to continue discussion with if you're willing to continue to, to button up some of those items and continue discussion with Mr. Eldridge and staff, that he'll keep us updated, and we'll be happy to reconsider at a future date. So with that, board, if we can entertain a motion to table this request to allow the applicant some additional time to, to figure out the, the details for insurance and
Do you think, do you think you can get it done for the, in time for the 20th?
I'm just waiting. I'll call back.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we can, I think we could definitely get the insurance quote by then, as well as contact the police department and ask about having an off-duty police officer and the costs associated with that and things like that, for sure.
Do you have an agreement by then?
I will make, I will see how good Joe is about getting things turned out. Bet they can.
Okay.
All right. So I'll make a motion to table this and until our next Board of Aldermen meeting.
I'll second that table.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no public hearings this evening, no old business or new business on the agenda. So move to Alderman discussion. Alderman Spencer?
It was a great day to be a bulldog. I presented to approximately 300 kindergarten through 5th grade, and I used the term kindergarten loosely, because they are just coming in. They have yet to be in school, and this was only the third day of summer school. So let's just say that even a straight line was interesting to watch. But it was a wonderful presentation. They were very engaged. And shout out to Liz Ivy and Linda Mangels for all their assistance. It was wonderful.
Would you also mind mentioning the zip trip? Because I continue to receive information from
I would love to. I would love to.
our 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 businesses that are involved that foot traffic has increased, including the Hoffmans at Decreamery. Decreamery told me one of their customers drove seventy miles one way after seeing them on the zip trip.
That's cool.
Yes, I think it has been wonderful. Decreamery has seen an increase. Three Birdies has said that they have had quite a variety of people in shopping. Pretty much everyone that was featured has seen.
We got a lot of new faces in the market.
Yep, new faces. So this is definitely driving tourism, which is what we were hoping for when we agreed to do this, and I think it has been fabulous for our community. Little snippets I keep seeing pop up on Facebook, and they're all very positive. A lot of enthusiasm and energy, so it went off very well.
I agree.
Alderman Holt?
Well, I was going to speak about the zip trip. I thought we we did a real good job with having our people come down here and support it. The stories that were told, the shops, all the businesses that were highlighted, I thought Channel Four did a fantastic job showing us off. And the enthusiasm with, we may not have the super crowds down here, but if you look on Facebook and you talk to people, there was a lot of enthusiasm that we got highlighted, and that was really cool, and it gave everybody a little pride, their their city, and that's, that was cool. So I had.
Alderman Lehman?
I'd just like to piggyback on the zip trip comments. Of course, I work in another municipality and I had several people that came up to me that had seen, seen it on either Fox Four or seen it on their webpage and and came up to me and said, don't you live in Carney? And I was like, well, yeah, I do. And I said, said, you guys had a zip trip? And they were like, yeah, we did. And and so they were, they were excited to come up here and and visit the restaurants and the shops and had one lady ask me what Three Birdies was, you know, and and so I had to explain that, you know, and so it it was really good to see our our hometown you know, focused on with Fox Four. The other, the other thing I'd like to mention, congratulations to the Carney Bulldog track team.
Yes.
The boys, I believe, were first place in the state. And the girls were third, so that's really, really neat to see from small town to Carney that's not small town anymore, so.
We'll have the track team here next June, June the twentieth.
Heck, yeah, we're trying to get them here.
Fantastic.
Because of summer and stuff like that.
Oh, you're not going to get them?
I'd have to wait until fall.
Yeah, but some of those seniors are going to be gone. But we're trying.
Good.
Okay.
It was sonic and watch our police and fire doing what they do, and then the bus, and my husband and I were honking and welcoming them in.
And the fireworks.
Everyone was, it was really wonderful.
So I love this.
It was the first time the girls team had placed in fireworks.
Yeah, there were fireworks.
There were fireworks. Yeah, it
No, we didn't know about it.
Marky didn't do it.
Yeah, because the first thing, first thing we noticed at my house was we heard fireworks, and it's like, why is there fireworks now, you know?
Bill's cool.
So then, obviously, Facebook had it all over there, so.
I've seen it on Facebook.
So it was, it was really neat, so.
I'll try and get them here.
Yep.
So you can write it.
Yep. That's all I have.
Alderman Barker?
Going to add to, for the zip trip, it was pretty amazing. I got to see some of it before I headed to work. But I want to thank the people like Alderman Spencer and the mayor. That stuff doesn't, that doesn't, doesn't happen by accident. It takes a lot of hard work and a lot of coordination, so thank you to all of the business owners who did their the work and to Jerry and to the mayor. And that's all I have.
And David did a good job on there, too. I watched you. That was pretty good.
All right, well, that concludes our meeting. Do we, do we have a motion? Can we entertain a motion, rather? Oh, my goodness.
Yes, I'll make a motion to a juror.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All in favor?